Maybe.
Who?
Didn't his name pay on it? Coroner?
Do you know where he's at of?
I think he's at Robert.
Corey would open us.
Sadly, Father, we come to you today, Lord, we just thank you for the many blessings. Lord, we just ask that you keep a watchful eye and protection over all of those that's out in the heat this week, Lord, that they be protected and be safe. We just thank you for the beautiful weather, the light rains that we've had here, Lord, over the last week, to give the farmers a much-needed drink for their crops. Lord, we just ask that you guide us as we go about today's meeting. We ask that you keep taking hand upon those that serve us each and every day with their tear and brought toward them. We just ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a very good one.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the paper.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Any questions?
Okay. Move.
Oh, move if they be approved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. I'll give some papers.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn is for Atlantic for utility one operator to raise sixteen dollars.
Second motion.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
We're on asphalt southeast end today. We have to land Friday. Hopefully, they finish it up today. It's been a little harder getting asphalt here lately. We're having a few truck issues. Dump trucks. Too quick.
What issues?
Transmission, some of the issues. We took one freight liner, had issue with that. They weren't able to find it. A mechanic was able to do some research over the weekend, you know, that he was going to try something different. The issue is, is having the truck down for him. Diagnosed it. We'll do what we can with what we got. Then we're going to Shimmerhorn there for the third of the mile or so. That's really all I have, other than I've been trying to find a place to get good clay. I was buying it north of town here from a guy that already reclaimed it. I think we're giving fifteen dollars a load for a dump truck and twenty for a end dump. Issue is, he sold it off. We like that material, that type of material, because we don't have to screen it virtually before we use it. We don't have to do all the extra work that comes with that shell stuff that we were getting. I've been trying to look around. I haven't been able to find it at a reasonable price. I would be okay doing a clay pit on my property, but I don't want to do it without getting it okayed. I don't really care either way. If we did it on my property, then I would just expect that our work to be cleaned up whenever it's done. That's enough. I wouldn't charge anything. My deal would be to get a hold. Just an easy out as well. Look to you guys.
I can keep looking if needed.
But we got all them little low spots that washed out during every drain. We got the spring, and I need to get them built back up. And whenever asphalt stops, I need to have the next thing going, so trucks will have something to haul. And I'm also, I got four employees, four of our employees that passed the written CDL tests. Now, it's all about training, so they need to drive that end up. And then the clay also gives them a duty to do that's not just driving around or going to the quarry that we don't really necessarily need the rock right now, so.
Was that as a result of the recent training opportunity?
Yeah.
What about the other cities?
Haven't heard anything from them. We give them the information and told them to let us know whenever they get somebody faxed their written test. And then they can do their, they get a learner permit basically, and then it's all hands-on training. I haven't heard anything. Provided them with the info, that they all have the same info my guys together. Just waiting. And I have all their plans. And like Baxter mentioned, they have a lot of projects going. Wanted to do it more towards the winter talk, if that will work, because then maybe I can get some of my guys through at the board, we're bombarded with a bunch of people who are. That's a lie out. And on the cloud, I just think that. I need to figure something out.
I just don't want to let the season get past before we get into some painting. I want to get some striking.
I'm just trying to get all the asphalt laid we could.
I did.
I mean, they can do it as long as it's not freezing, so.
But since you're doing that with a third party, you're going to.
Yeah, I'll get hold of them, make sure that we're on the list. But they're, you know, we've only worked with them one time, but they've been very responsive. They're actually really proactive, I guess.
Where are they at of?
In Nebraska, I believe. But I got contact, because I guess a lot of Kansas counties.
That's a real waste of time without other projects.
Yeah, but I mean, that's kind of how them companies work. I mean, there's not a lot of, whatever you think, how many people today need stripping down on their highways. I mean, there's a lot of miles out there, but I don't, I don't really know. I'm not in that world.
Anyone else? I saw the paper, what's the paper this one? The paving machine?
Oh, yeah.
Like to see it in action.
They, like I said, they're on Ninetieth today. We don't know if we'll be able to get all the way done with it just because of truck availability. Basically, right now, we're down to the two Sterlings. We're replacing a Feld Cullver on Northwest Twentieth or Bellevue West of Twentieth. So I've ordered, you know, something going with my excavators. I've been holding the Sterlings for that. And the Sterlings can only haul, you know, can't load a ton from the port or from the asphalt plant. Gets to being where it's not really worth our time on the tonnage. But we'll pull them if we need to. And they've been trying to figure out a way, their best way. Junior, you know, he's learned to run a machine. They're doing the twine now, to try to keep them straight lines. The issues they're going to run to into on a road like Shimmerhorn and such, it'll be a lot nicer. But like on Ninetieth, it's so crooked anyway. It's hard to even set a string up, straight string, and then be able to follow it. It's hard to get the strings set where it's not going to.
Are they setting it in the center or on the edge?
They tried the center. And then every employee that drove by it decided that they needed to drive on it. And so they have a lot of issues there.
Sure.
And so he's going to try it on the edge. That's the other issue is you're going to do is sometimes the, I mean, if you just look down our roads, a lot of times they'll hourglass in and out. And so if you do it on the edge, you're trying to mediate that so it all doesn't know where you're at. Really, honestly, I think it needs done in the center, and then employees need to know enough to drive over it. That's easier said than done. So we'll get there. Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you, Jake.
Robert, are you here for a throw? Oh, there we are. I didn't see you.
How?
We're early.
We are early. We're good when you're good. It's Barry talking, not me.
Morning.
Morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
Good. Well, it's a pleasure to see everyone again. Very match it, clearway energy. So I wanted to just stop by and tell you all we presented. We sent an email around with a grant development agreement, road use agreement, and decommission agreement on the solar project. And I think Jake, you have a copy as well from the West State.
Yeah, it's like I got that Friday at about two P M.
Yeah. So we, we wanted to just, I just wanted to come in and tell you a little bit about what we sent over so that you all have an opportunity to have some context for it and, and, you know, hopefully, you'll take a moment to review it. But what we want to do is just start a conversation. I apologize, I normally don't have my glasses, but I'm just going blind. I can't see anything. But what we wanted to do in presenting a development agreement is instead of coming back to you and telling you yet again that we'd like to build a solar project, we wanted to start putting some works down on the page that show our commitment to the components that we have talked about, put it in sort of the legally binding contract that we have seen work in other counties. Right? So we'd like to essentially zone ourselves, right? And in so, in so doing, the property owners throughout the rest of Cherokee County don't need to be zoned. Right? With the county zoning that has started to be worked on. As you guys know, we're big proponents of property rights. We think that the landowners have a right to use their land as they see fit. And so in preparing a development agreement, a road use agreement, a decommission agreement to regulate ourselves, it means that others do not need to be regulated. This allows the county to focus just on our project with the efforts around zoning appropriately for an energy project like a, like a solar project. We hope that we can have a conversation. We have a draft here that's based on best practices of what we have seen in other Kansas counties, including neighboring counties that have had, in lieu of zoning, they have done development agreements, road use agreements, and decommission agreements. So I'll just quickly review for you what's in the document so that you have some sense, there are the three documents, so you have some sense of what you're looking at. And then again, we would appreciate the opportunity to come back and visit with you. We'd love to have a conversation with you at the appropriate time to go through the details of the document and see if it is on the right key or if we're off key. We want to continue to work on this. In the development agreement, there are essentially ten separate items. But foremost, and ones that are probably top of mind, are the setbacks. We three hundred feet from non-participating landowners. That's a very significant, it's a whole football field worth of setback if you were to develop a solar project. Vegetative screening requirements. Obviously, that's, we've talked about that a lot. That's the planting of trees, foliage, the development of, in many cases, the most appropriate thing is high prairie grasses that can grow that would, that would shield the, the project visually from any adjoining neighbors or from the road. We have requirements in there for how high they need to be, the plants need to be at the time of planting, and of course, they would grow above that. We delineate how collection lines, above ground and below ground, would be done. Again, in concert with best practices around the, around the state and around the country. Sound level requirements. We know that there are people that have said, at the meeting we had over at the school a year ago, that they were worried about the sound of the fans on the, you know, was they cooled, the transformers and the, and the inverters. So this has sound levels and limits in it. Delineation of the type of ground cover that would go underneath the panels. As you all know, as I've mentioned before, when we build a solar project, we, we try to do as little work on the land as possible. We don't want to go in and do a bunch of grading and tearing up anything. You know, part of the decommissioning, of course, is to restore the land to the way that it was. We know there's a native seed base, and so sometimes that's the most appropriate thing to leave in place. But some of our landowners would like us to put the solar panels far enough apart that they can continue to grow hay or other crops between the, between the rows of panels and still be able to drive their harvesting material, their harvesting machinery between the rows so they can continue to actually derive ag income from that land. And so as we think about ground cover, that's, that's delineated in this development agreement, providing flexibility for whatever, however you guys wanted to think about that. Security fencing, lighting, the security of the project in the form of, in the form of just the, the financial security, the insurance, and then the interaction between the project and the emergency services in the county. All of those are in what's in the development agreement. In the road use agreement, probably the two highlights and the two most remaining things are the obligation on the project owner, us, to do a pre-construction inventory of the roads. Right? The way the road use agreement works is we do a pre-construction inventory of the roads. We delineate the load, there's a load limit, I think it's eighty thousand, eighty thousand pounds for any truck. We would obviously never be that high. But we do, when then we sit down with the road commissioner and we sit and figure out the exact routes that we would be obligated to utilize. And then after construction, we do a post-construction inventory of the roads and restore the roads. If there's been damage, it's caused by us. That's what the road use agreement, in short, does. It's a, it's a, I think, an important commitment to the county. And then last, but not least, the decommission agreement. As we've talked about before, the primary goal there is to ensure that there is an obligation to restore the land to its original condition after the project's end of life. In short, that boils down to money. Removing a solar project is not a particularly expensive activity. You're just driving piles in, and so you're just removing piles out. There's almost no concrete pads put anywhere, but anything that's put in gets removed. There's a cost associated with that. But of course, we're using a lot of steel, we're using a lot of aluminum. That all has a long-term value. And so basically, what you do with the decommission obligation is you say, clearway, you figure out how much, you use a third party to figure out how much it would cost to remove this, and then how much the sale of the steel, the aluminum, the copper, the valuable components would yield. So let's say it costs five million dollars to pull it out of the ground, but you got three million dollars' worth of metal that you're going to resell. You have a two million dollar difference between those two numbers. We would then be obligated to bond that with a bank, and that money would sit there, independent of us. It would sit there. And then every so many years, you go in and you reassess, is there enough money in that decommissioning bond to actually take care of this if, clearway, no longer exists in 2070, right? When you, when you'd be decommissioning. That follows the project company. So if at any point the project were to, to change hands, that obligation, that bond is tied to that LLC, to that company. It's not something that is dismissible, it can't be discharged through bankruptcy. There's nothing that removes that obligation from continuing to exist and that money to be available. And so that's what the decommission agreement, in short, summarizes and codifies. So those are the three major things. Development agreement, road use agreement, decommission obligation that we've presented to Jake and to you all for your consideration. We would really appreciate an opportunity to come back and talk to you about this, whether that's in a week, two weeks, three weeks, a month. But we would really, really appreciate, we're coming in good faith to try to find a good path here for the development of a solar project that completely addresses the issues of the community that are, that are really important issues. How would this actually happen? We think that this is a good way to start that conversation. So I'll pause there and see if you have any questions. I'm happy to try to answer this morning, or as I said, come back at any time you wish.
I'll just say that you're talking about circumventing the zoning board, what's going on now. And the board did vote to approve planning and zoning. They're committed to, we have a board that's been working pretty hard to come up with a plan and have committed to a third-party consultant with influence. And I don't see this before from this board to circumvent the work of that planning and zoning committee. We're looking, what, to about June, maybe?
June of next year is the estimated deadline for a development of a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and I understand. We're interested in trying to move it at a faster pace because of what the grid is requiring us to do to interconnect the project. And so, you know, again, we're coming in good faith with our, our need. We understand that there are different needs with timelines that don't perfectly align. I wish they did align, it'd be much easier. But they don't align. And so we're trying to figure out a way to acknowledge that that committee is working on zoning the county and everything that comes with that, a comprehensive plan and the reduction of the ability of the public to use their land the way they want to. In lieu of that, in the short term, allowing us to move forward with a very tight development agreement, we feel is a, is an effort worth exploring and seeing whether or not there's something that can be done in this space. So we are asking for you all to consider that, not to circumvent the process, but in fact, to put in place zoning requirements for this project that would be very strict and frankly, could be built upon in the zoning committee's work, right? The comprehensive plan may very well take the things that are in the development agreement that we propose and put them into ordinance that also regulates the many other functions that a comprehensive plan and under Kansas law has to regulate. So we're hoping that this is a way to have a conversation about that.
Those, every item you mentioned are areas that they are addressing. Have you submitted that to them as well?
Well, that's our understanding after attending a couple of the meetings, that they're not at the point where they're actually taking in specific information. The consultant, our understanding, we might be wrong, is the consultant is doing a lot of work sort of behind the scenes to get, I guess, maybe best practices for a comprehensive plan for a county that's going to, that's going to zone the county. They're working kind of behind the scenes, and that the committee hasn't yet started to see substantive proposals. If there are substantive proposals that the consultant is working on, particularly vis-à-vis solar, we would happily engage in that process. But that doesn't change the fact that we have a faster timeline on this project than the middle of next summer, when comprehensive zoning would come to the county. So that's why we're here. It's not to, it's not to be rude to the, to the board at all. I don't really want to be here saying, can you please move faster? I understand you put in place a process. But on our end, as a business, we do need to, need to continue to move this project forward. And so that's why we're here, trying to offer something that is helpful in that regard. Or hopefully, you'll consider it. We don't, what we don't want to do is wait for a comprehensive plan and then a vote to zone the whole county on everything that might not occur. There's no guarantee that the vote after the comprehensive plan comes out, that, that there will be a vote that would have to be public carries on it. There may not be any action on that until December of 2026, 2027. You're under no obligation to take the comprehensive plan and immediately vote it into law as, oh, now we're going to zone the whole county. And so that, that timeline is just very, very, very difficult for business to work with, and particularly for the grid operator. The grid operator's saying, we need power. That's why we're here. Hopefully, you'll take it into consideration and give us an opportunity to sit down. We'd happily get on a Zoom call, happily come back and, and, and sit down in person, whatever is most convenient for you, to just kind of beat these ideas up. If they're bad ideas, we're okay here, and they're bad ideas. If they're, if they're not enough, we're okay. We're flexible, we take feedback all the time. So we appreciate the opportunity.
I get where you're coming from, but again, the support, I don't believe is there. We'll know if we get a motion and a second. I believe the support is there to do that. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Appreciate what you've submitted.
Yeah, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Harry, anybody coming with you?
No, just me.
Sure not.
Finally got the company computer survey on the property. Well, we're by the service office.
Thank you.
I must say, this doesn't really help me other than to see the total acreage, but in proximity to the rest of, I see the total acreage, I mean, that's helpful. But in proximity to the entire tract, is this on the north?
Yes, this is on the.
This borders the north.
This is the north property line of the current property. The left side is the, would be the property line from the east side. And it's the highway right away. Did they get put up their flags? Did they flag it? Yeah.
Did they start on that digging for the dirt?
For.
I don't know about digging in the dirt. Here's the director.
I, the only thing I know of was that they had talked about maybe using some of the property that was there for filter for this project, but we haven't, the board hasn't even picked a contractor yet.
You just got, but he is flagged out there now, we can see where it's going to be, the flag is there.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, and they just moved it too. So I mean, they flagged it and then kind of on this one, they're plugged it in. So it should be really easy to spot this.
Jake, what are, are we able to just give this? I assume we kind of checked it, that we'll start this project.
I think we did, but that's been a full month ago. I had to go back and look at exactly what the rules are. We'd be needing it to the annual service, right? Yeah, I believe so, but I'll have to double check that.
We'll put that on that dinner for next week for the secret. Go ahead and operate that, we need to dip it to.
It's got a legal in there?
Yes, there's, actually, this is a UPO copy for you. They sent it out first.
While you're here?
Yes, sir.
I heard something last week that really blew me away, about the association.
Okay.
That your meetings are closed to the public?
They, they are not, yes. They're not required to be open to the public this way, but I am, I understand it because it's a private corporation.
Well, the statutes may agree with that, I think. But I don't understand why you wouldn't do that. Why would you want a meeting in secret? Why would you not want transparency, winners? This, or not us, but the commission put the annual association together decades ago, right?
I am not sure.
And I think we've been heavily involved. I mean, this past year, we've given almost a million dollars, taxpayer money. That's a lot of money to not have open meetings. A lot of government. That's a lot of money to not have open means, a lot of government taxpayer money. I find that appalling, I really do. And is that something that's been you?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because the only meeting I've ever attended, it was when Cory and Lori and I attended the Baxter before they merged, and we were there because of some contentious items that I'm sure they were not pleased to discuss, but they opened us with open arms to be there. And I just ask, what purpose? Why? You need the secrecy.
I can take it to my board and announce that I am out of control of those meetings. I'm just an employee of theirs.
But you did have part of the conversation, didn't you, when David Rose consulted you and Dale?
I offered, I offered my opinions, yes. And so then other people, people on the board.
I mean, I'm just going to be here another year, but for future, I have a real problem with that not being open and again, taking so much fun. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars is past yearly, was dedicated to that association. And to shield the taxpayers from what goes on in policy, I don't see. I find it appalling, I really do. I would ask that you address that with your board.
I will call my board president while I be here.
Well, obviously, you already have an opinion and so does your board president. So I think it needs to go before the board to see if they want to change that policy.
Right, and I will. I'm just saying that I will notify him of your concerns and stuff, so that it can be included on the list of things to discuss at the next meeting.
When is that?
It is on September 3rd.
If you guys don't vote to change that, I'd like to have another conversation with somebody from the association there in front of the podiums to buy. I just don't seem to agree with you. I was shocked, I really was. That's all I know. You still support the vote?
No, those are legal, those are just copies, so I love to see you guys still have copies in the middle of them. He, Jake, I need to get him an actual legal one that they sent with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I can have the clerk come and scan that in, and you guys, you want me to give my copy of it? Oh, you got one? Oh.
Okay, the clerk was going to put this on agenda, it's not, but it's all business. On our title work, on the quarter-mile road, first they quoted her, I think, was it three hundred dollars, but then they said that they would have to, I told her when Taylor called that we want to make sure that we are getting road easements on that road. That's what we're looking for, whether it exists or does not exist. So subsequent conversations she had with them, then they were going to have to do searches on all those properties, but I don't know why they did that before anyway, but it gets into quite a bit more money than what we thought. And this morning, I was talking with Taylor, and she said that, she just thought it was a couple of years back, that Rebecca was in nine-one-one mapping, part of that. But when Rebecca was in nine-one-one mapping and she was in the appraiser's office, that the two of them researched this and did find easements. And I said, oh my gosh, you should have copied that from her file, so.
Let us know at that point in time.
Pardon?
Then I should have known that when I found that, because this isn't a new issue.
Right, yes, we've been revisiting it many times. So I asked Karen this morning, and I know Taylor has a lot of expertise and research because of her previous job at the title, but she's pretty well-known to be a pretty top researcher. So I asked Karen this morning if her office would take a look at that, see what we can find before, if you agree able to continue this, continue to table this and see what we can find in house without, like, all those expenses.
Yeah, if we've got, we've got capability, we've got people able to look for it, and...
That's not their job in the department, it's really not. Their job is to record, not research so much. If they're willing, Karen said they will.
Do it, and then we've got time to do it, it'd be a very good deal.
Absolutely. That would be nice if we could. No better. Can you convince your boss that her help would surely be very much appreciated to help them in that? Interim fee, do we have that resolution now?
No, I was going to try to have it this week, I'll have it next week.
So we're talking about the autopsies a little bit. Jake, Nate, is he a physician?
I believe so.
So he's going to command a lot of money probably to come down here and just visit with us. I'm wondering if we could submit some question to him to just ask what the kind of lights are, call for an autopsy, and then we can follow up. Maybe we just do that by email. It's kind of like, we don't want to call Mac Young here, but he's going to charge his mileage, this would be way more than mileage. That's if you cooperate and just get the, yeah.
Right. So what, can't hurt them?
Jake, would you be willing to submit that to him?
Yeah, so we just want guidelines.
Protocol on determining when to authorize an autopsy. Want to express our concern, but there's definitely been some inconsistencies. I can think of two of not old people who died alone, and there were no autopsies for this, this most recent one, really. Does that make sense to you?
I don't know.
Yeah?
I imagine the insurance companies probably is behind a lot of it.
Oh, that's most recent, where the person at fault is deceased, what had the insurance made of that? And they, they did not yield.
I know, but I mean...
It's not at fault.
There's probably going to be a suit against them. I don't think they're going to look at toxicology, even though they were toxicating beyond. I mean, I understand your point, if they didn't yield, they didn't yield, but I don't, I don't do that type of litigation.
I just figured, probably had a lot to do with insurance.
But as Paul pointed out, you don't have to have an autopsy to, to, to consolidate the, the, which was, this case. Anybody in our audience have anything for us?
I want to know more about secret meeting that you asked about.
Not a secret meeting. My contention is that when they close the meetings to the public, if they're meeting in secrecy.
We're finding that a lot. I, I asked for a coma thing from the local hospital here, and I was refused, and the lawyer said that it, it, they didn't have to, they said the hospital board was exempt because they're a separate board from the city, and I, I requested this stuff through the city. And then when I requested it from the board, they refused it. And I, because their theory was that it wasn't, they, they weren't using any taxpayer money that was theirs. This is not the case with this ambulance, though.
I was, statutes, and it doesn't allow, I mean, that's not the only criteria.
No, I know, I'm just telling you how they turned me down.
I think they may be within their right to do it, but we...
I was told at one time I could go to the meeting, and I never went, and then I was told I couldn't come to the meeting.
When was that?
When was I told I couldn't?
Which minute, are you talking about ambulance?
Ambulance, with my phone.
Yeah, Doug invited me several times, and I never could go, but, and that's my fault, I, I should have, but they met at the same time somebody else met or something. But, but the thing is that I, I think if they get any-
I was told Friday, July 25th, that I couldn't go. I was told.
Well, I was on the board for seven years as secretary at Henn, I just now found out it was closed. I did, I had told them to wear a back, because as long as I was on the board secretary, it was, I thought we were open and anybody could come, and I know we did.
Sheldon, actually, I asked Sheldon when the meeting was, in January, and he told me, I, he told me where it was and that I could come. I said, I'd like to go, know when the ambulance board meeting is, and I'd like to come, and he said, the next one is January 8th at 6:00 PM in Columbus. And then in July, I was told it was closed meeting.
I'm, I'm just a surprise, because I always thought we were open, and I, I feel a little embarrassed about that now.
I just don't feel like, I-
It should be open.
The reason I brought it back up is I don't feel like he's right about that. I mean, I, did you check it?
It's, it's gray.
Did you ask a lawyer if it was?
No, I didn't ask a lawyer, but lawyers obviously wrote it off, but it's, it's gray, and I, I can see it airing on their side, it's just, even so, why? Why do you, I mean, our budget's a little over sixty million last year, we gave over a million to them, well, nine hundred and fifty thousand, we don't have to fund it in that capacity.
Well, we give them a half a million dollars a year in tax money, though.
Six fifty.
Well, I mean, okay, I rounded it down.
Three hundred thousand a heartbeat that could have been used to relieve some of the debt here.
But my, but my point is that that, that's what the coma laws are supposed to be, is when they spend taxpayers' money. I, I've run into the same problem at the local museum. I can't get any of their board meetings because they're, they don't have, they don't get any taxpayer money. And so if, if they don't, they're a private organization and they don't follow any of the coma law, but the ambulance isn't that case. I've dealt with this quite a bit, and I don't see where they would have a right to say, your meeting is closed, unless they're trauma personnel.
I think they might, but still, yeah, I don't think they should.
No. Maybe we should ask the lawyer.
Well, he hasn't had a chance, we throw this stuff on Jake, okay, Jake, here.
Well, I don't, I'm not asking for an answer, but I'm just saying that he can check it.
Yeah.
I'll send you some stuff like two o'clock Friday, can you dress that up?
That happens all the time, we're, we're as guilty as anybody else. You have anything to add?
Um, maybe not by today or the next week, but Monday, the first, is Laverden, we're closed, so when do we want to do that?
We don't want to do that, maybe.
It's long for me.
Thursday, Friday, Friday, which best for you?
It's payday at the...
Uh-uh, so it'd need to be probably Friday before, I think is standard practice.
Or even, we have done Wednesday afternoon, or Wednesday.
Whatever.
Not a, depends on the...
I don't know, do we have?
Do you have a preference?
No, just whatever you guys, like, they'll never, I'll be there.
Did they give me a basis?
I promise you, up until last year-
What's that?
You could come. There was never a-
Oh, he don't, oh, he don't live here, but Jake, no call.
Considering the ambulance association is a private corporation, the meetings are not open to the public.
About Friday?
Is next Friday?
It's a half million.
It'll be the 28th through 29th, if you didn't-
I just left it at that.
Yeah, next, yeah, next, you'll have the meeting Monday, the 26th, and then you'll need a meeting at the end of that week to cover.
It's because of-
This is the point, can we take care of the 25th? We don't have another meeting, is there?
They won't have all the stuff.
And you are?
Tony's, he's the secretary.
But they were 29th.
Oh, I know who's secretary, which I was. They don't follow, they don't follow their own policies either.
Well, this is, this is due this last year, this is all changed. It was done that way before, I promise, because I was there seven years, it was totally, we would have welcomed, please come, so.
The, the museum board is-
Hey, when is your plan, Tyra?
The museum board?
Yeah, I don't have it.
My laws say they have had one every month, and they don't have one, they haven't had one for six months.
A board, right? Believable, museum has one, and I could go to the one that I wanted.
I don't think, I'm sorry, I'm shocked.
You wouldn't be shocked about something else. That building they built was three hundred and sixty thousand.
No, this one, probably on the one on the 20th.
And they needed another three hundred and fifty, half a million.
I mean, I guess you could do it today, so you don't forget.
For a blank building.
It'd be like, it'd be a special meeting.
And the problem is, it's not happening. The chance would be done.
On the 29th? For the purpose of payables?
To the genealogical society, and the genealogical society.
Motion, I'm saying, I'm voting for that.
Six thousand dollars a year from this board.
We do it same minute as the current client, three questions, and then we have it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I second that motion to zoom at 10 o'clock.